All right. Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived, we'll call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hon.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
President.
Yes. Seven members of the Village Board being present, a quorum being established, we proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. For the record, the date is Tuesday, August 20th of 2019. We are at the Village Hall, 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM and this is a regular meeting. Moving along, in the opening, the rule call has been completed, which brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand and face the flag. Let's have Mr. Palazzolo lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we need to set the agenda. The agenda's been posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Therefore, there can be no action items added to the agenda. Any trustees seeking recognition for discussion purposes, please forward those to the Chair at this time. The trustees, okay, seeing none, we need to set the agenda. It's our motion to that effect. Motion's been made by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Hon. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the agenda is set. Clerk's report. Item number one is the presentation of the July 23rd, 2019 meeting minutes for approval. Those minutes are presented by the clerk. Are there any additions or corrections as presented? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the July 23rd, 2019 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? And that's been made by Trustee Tim, seconded by Trustee Long. Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no, the minutes are approved. And will be added to the Village website for dissemination and inspection. Next is the presentation of the bills for approval. Treasurer Stumpel is in the audience. Are there any questions regarding the bills? Treasurer, is there anything to point out that's outside the normal course of your business?
There is just a lot of waiting, betting over a month. There's just quite a few bills that are in there that are being paid this month, so it's higher than normal now.
Trustees, any questions regarding the bills? Any explanations?
I have a question about the diesel fuel. Was that for like in a tank or is that just?
Yeah.
To all the trucks?
I believe that's all in a tank.
All the tank.
We have a tank?
Yes.
Two hundred.
Yes, right in the total works building. Any other questions? So, we need a motion to approve the payment of the bills. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Clerk, please call and roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The bills are approved for payment. Treasurer, treasurer's report. There is a treasurer's report this evening. Anybody have any questions regarding the treasurer's report? Treasurer, anything to point out?
Nothing in particular.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the treasurer's report. And then we'll put it on the website for public inspection. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Seconded by Trustee Tim, so clerk, co-roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hon.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
That's six members voting yes, none voting no. The treasurer's report is approved. The village engineer, Mr. Kuhn, Administrator Kuhn is in attendance. Would you like to report on anything this evening?
I do. It's been a while since I've been here. I know, I know you miss me. But been busy in the background. We've still been working. I'm gonna go over a few things that we're working on. The Old Tipton, what we call the Old Tipton Trail, which is the trail from, goes down Old Tipton Road from the park to where is that?
Red Bull. What is it, Red Bull?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Red Bull.
Tentative timeline for us to get that going would be, hopefully show back up here October, beginning of October, with approval from the board to go out for bid. We should get those back and be back in the beginning of November to approve those bids. It'll take 15 to 20 days to get everything executed and insurance and all that. And so maybe a notice to proceed in the beginning of December. That being said, we'll be moving into the winter months, right? And it's all weather related, so, you know, I mean if the snow's flying early, they're not gonna get started. And of course, that all just gets pushed back and forth, so. But, we wanna get out there and get going so that they can do what they, what they can during the winter. And then when spring hits, they'll hit it. You know, I would anticipate, I would anticipate most of the construction for that being in spring, if that makes sense to you. And that was just on Red Bull?
Yeah, from the entrance to Old Tipton Estates to the park, a 10-feet-wide path to connect the residents of Old Tipton Estates safely to the new park. And then, the future plan would be to take that path all the way down Old Tipton School Road. And then ultimately, down Andrew Road to connect with the Sherman Williamsville Bike Trail. So that's the long-range planning. But the immediate short-term, to get the Old Tipton Estates, those first and second phases that are over there now safely to the park along that busy road with somewhat higher speeds, would be to complete that trail from there to there. Now, we did, and we are seeking some capital money regarding this. I had sent Representative Butler, Leader Brady, a letter and listed that as one of our items that we would, you know, interested in giving some number initiative money along the area. The capital bill and any other funds that are out there. And then we're also seeking other grants and other monies in other, in other ways. We could bond it out. We need to do the bids. They would bid probably both ways. I don't want to see a blacktop trail, but we could look at, you know, just getting this to benchmark against that. I know when we did a blacktop trail in the path, it was about $14,000 difference versus the concrete. The concrete was much cleaner, nicer, easier for us to fix in-house. If something were to happen regarding the trail, because you can just cut a section and, you know, form a poor new one. So that would be the plan on that trail. But the engineering specs have to move forward. Administrator Stratton has sent out an email and contacted the nine houses that are located, nine, eleven, nine, nine. Nine houses that are located along there. We have property issues where they actually owned to the ditch, not that fence line. That fence line that is put in and owned by the homeowners association is actually on private property. So there's been some dispute regarding the homeowners association access in and out of that gate. And then this path sitting on that private personal property. So what we would do, the intent would be to do the same as what we did at the park regarding that path with the Saff family. If you remember, we absolved them of all liability and assumed that liability at risk. They gave us an easement to install that 10-feet-wide walking, running, biking trail around the entire development. But again, it's our risk management association insurance that assumes the risk. So if you're a property owner that lives along there, you would obviously want that to be part of any deal. And that will be part of the deal, just in case someone would be injured on that property. We've also proposed having the property lines drawn back to that fence line, to the property owners. I think that's a non-starter, because it really only takes one person to kind of throw a cog in this whole deal. Just based on the property being owned all the way to the ditch. So, everybody's pretty much supportive and on board. I think they're, one of the things they're looking for is access out that back gate to that. So that's something that Mr. Stratton went to the homeowners association meeting last Wednesday, two minutes ago, and talked to them about. But there's other moving parts in this aside from the bidding. If you remember, we were gonna have our public works guys do this in-house. It's a pretty big project. And with the amount of stuff that they have going and the small number of staff that we have, it's kind of looks like it's outside of, I wouldn't say outside of their scope, but it's outside of the scope of what we want to do with all the other things that are needing to be tended to. So, going back to what Engineer said, we'll put it out, we'll have the bid specs drawn, drafted up, and then put it out to bid and see where, what the cost coming at. And that's ultimately gonna be another component of this, what does this thing cost?
The intersection is the tricky part. We gotta, we gotta cross them, they gotta cross it in front of the stop bars. So they gotta cross where the stop signs are, so. There's a culvert right there. And so, I mean, in-house staff's not gonna be able to take the time to rip that apart and put us in a new culvert and redo all that. That's, that's a.
And you just reminded me of something else. There's actually a 10th property owner in this. That's the state of the moon, like, so they have a small section, a piece of ground down there. That's right around that intersection that he's talking about. So we'd have to deal with the bureaucracy of IDOT as well regarding access and approval to pay on that path. I think that's what we've done, but it's still a process. So, that's where that stands, that's where we're at on that. There's a lot of Old Tipton residents that are asking those questions. I know myself, the administrator, they're asking you. I hope that brings you up to speed. And then you can just direct any questions to myself or to Administrator Stratton then.
So we, tentative dates, you know, what I gave you, October, November, we can go out for bid. We can get the bids, we can review the prices, so we know what kind of prices we're looking at. We just don't wanna issue a notice to proceed until we have the legal right to use it. So, all this other stuff doesn't really, we don't have to approve bids, we just, but we need to get it moving down the road so we figure out where we're at. But, this is all gonna happen right during the winter, so weather's gonna be a factor. Just throwing that out there. So, don't say we're gonna start, we'll start construction again, we're gonna be done in March. It's gonna be snowing.
Okay, next.
So these other three, I don't know if you've noticed, some rattling on St. John's, St. John's. We've got an issue on Widenmere Drive and we have Village Center Drive. So, we're going to put some, for MFT, those are gonna be, those are gonna be outside of a maintenance. What MFT calls maintenance, it's gonna be a construction section, which it just takes longer for them to approve it. We will not, we will not make the construction season for that to happen this year. So we'll, we'll be doing those and then we'll also put those in the MFT bulletin during the winter. Contractors usually like to give you a good price because they're trying to line everything up for spring. So they're usually fairly competitive. That's good. The bike trail, the Sherman Williamsville Bike Trail. We are still waiting on one piece of land. There is one landowner that they're still negotiating with. It happens to be where we wanna put the parking lot on this end, so it's an important piece. Everything else, I think, is in place, except for all the environmentals are gonna, we're gonna have to apply for them all again because they're all gonna phase out in the second time we've done that. Your environmental is only good, like, you do the environmental and they're like, it's good for two years. You can't construct during this period of time, right between everything. Well, then I don't know why it would change, but it expires in two years and you have to reapply as, maybe because more endangered species, I don't, but yes, the bats. We anticipate the Indiana bats will still be there. You send them back to Indiana?
No, don't be sending them. Hold on, then going further on that, what Engineer Kuhn spoke of is the fact that there is one property owner who's hanging this up in terms of taking it to the next step. Mayor Yocle has spoken with her. I know he had an hour conversation with her the first time. I know the second time he had probably a half-hour conversation with him, with her. And then another short conversation. He and I are supposed to try and talk to her as well. But to the extent that he's, and we can't make any headway, we're gonna have to look at various different options that are available, we need all options. Piece of property is pretty much useless for anything other than this parking lot and to be the trailhead. So, we're dealing with an individual who's, you know, she's in her 70s and she thinks that she's gonna hand it down, I think, to the family or something along those lines. It's not, I don't think it's cost feasibly developable. It's so heavily wooded, the tree clearing and the amount of acreage that you have, there's nothing you can do with it unless you're really looking to waste, waste your money. We've offered her a, basically telling her that we would give her a fairer price, even a little bit over, you know, what it praises at essentially. To let her know what good she's going to be doing for the community. But to the, to date, we, he hasn't been able to get her to move off of where she's at right now. But we're gonna continue to try and talk to her and then, I don't know how much longer we're gonna try and do that. Because then we'll start looking at other avenues to bring this trail to its next step.
I think the story is her and her husband bought it thinking that one day they would build a house on it. So there's sentimental value there that, I mean, how do you put a price on that? I think that's the whole of it.
But that, I just wanna bring you up to speed on that. My last conversation with Mayor Yocle was literally last Friday, I think it was, Thursday or Friday.
I'm assuming it's a late.
Right off Andrew Road.
Right off Andrew Road, Andrew and Barbara. The utility substation. Very heavily wooded, very deep ravine. You're not gonna do anything with it except for park cars, in my opinion, so.
With a lot of fill.
With a lot of fill, right. Okay, next.
We've had some drainage issues. Mr. Stratton and I have been working on those with several, several locations. Not gonna bore you with all that. And, let me see, my last note was building code, but I think we, that was just us talking. Nothing to report on changing building code. You still checking in on the Bursley Lake Drive? Drainage issue that's messing with the street, especially in the wintertime, freezes over.
Is that the eyebrow one?
Natural drain or something?
Yes, that's the one, yeah. We did go over from Petersburg of that. We've also reviewed both from Petersburg, I was in reference to the three other areas where the Village for drainage purposes. We plan to come back before here, actually come talk to the President a little bit.
Regarding Bursley Lake Drive, I can tell you that we're gonna have to look at repaving that Bursley Lake Drive down by that half eyebrow culvert. There's a lot of issues regarding the drainage in there. Storm sewers probably needs to be put in in that area. There's a natural spring in the area. So, don't put it in right now, do it all at the same time. And so, road repairs, much like we did a couple, few years ago, are gonna have to be on the docket in the near future again to resurface some roads.
Have you seen, have you seen that, that water just coming out of the side?
Yeah.
I mean, it just comes out of the side of that.
Yeah, it does, and I know it's a plowing snow and hoping guys, past years, it just freezes up and.
It's a nice one.
Yeah. So the real, the best answer is to capture it right there so it won't tear up our road. And there's not, there's storm sewer not that far away, but we're gonna have to tear up some stuff to get to it. So if we do that, we might as well resurface the road. And that property goes from costing this much to this much, but that's the right answer. I mean, if we, yeah, it's just a spring coming out of there.
All right, is that included your report?
That's all I have, sir.
Trustees, anything for engineering outside of Mr. Long's question? No? Okay, so let's move to legal, anything? Village Administrator, Economic Development Coordinator? Okay, so let's move to the President's report. Item number one is an ordinance for the approval to finance the purchase of a police squad car. Squad car, Chief Banger is in attendance. Chief, can you give us a 30-second, raise up the speed synopsis of what you're replacing, what you're asking for?
Sure, sure. Sure. We're replacing a 2009 Dodge Charger that we had in the fleet for that period of time. Mileage-wise and maintenance, there's been some issues with the dispatch, especially, but it's time to replace it. We got our option available to us to purchase this 2019 model, it was really the last one they had of the lot. But as opposed to going through the whole process and bringing that for the latter part of the year to deliver it for the newer model year time. So, they did have one last one in a while, it's one of the, so we just pursue and play and.
Questions regarding the squad car purchase? I'll just state that this is in your budget for the 2020 fiscal year. Any questions? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the ordinance to approve the finance purchase of this police squad car. I'm gonna tell you that there were four requests that were sent. UCB, Williamsville State Bank, INB, Hickory Point Bank and Trust. Two submitted proposals by the deadline. Williamsville State Bank and Trust came back with 4% for a five-year term. INB came back at 2.75% for a tax exempt rate. Staff recommends that it go to INB. Any questions? That's a point in the quarter difference between the two that submitted proposals. Nothing? Everybody okay with doing this?
All we're gonna, all we're gonna have to do is just give them a letter that is a tax exempt.
Yeah, right, okay. So we need a motion to approve the ordinance that sits on the table, listed on item number one of the President's report. Public Safety Trustee, Trustee Tim makes a motion to approve such measures. There are seconds, seconded by Trustee Schultz. Clerk, please go and roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no. The ordinance is adopted, it will be signed by the President and we pull the financing. Item number two is the proclamation listed on the President's report. It's what proclaim September as passport month. Our guest that's in the audience, I am gonna ask you to come forward, please, and tell us again what we're doing here.
Mr. President, as in the past, over the last two years, you've been kind enough to approve a proclamation to help raise the awareness level of the need for a passport, particularly here in the Village of Sherman. I've given you a report that highlights what our numbers have been over the last two years regarding passports here in Sherman. We usually do two locations every year, since I've had an opportunity to get the passport program really rolling. Sherman Public Library and United Community Bank in Sherman. And we've steadily increased the numbers. Your approval of this proclamation with your kind consideration will give us a tool to raise the awareness level and promote the passport opportunities here in the Village of Sherman. And we'll see if you were interested in other locations and what some of the requirements are for a passport. That's on the other side of the same document. We're not only in Sherman, but we're in Riverton, Southernview, of course, Springfield, Auburn. We were in Pawnee, a very successful bay in Pawnee, nearly 50 passports in Pawnee. So we ask for your kind consideration of that proclamation as before. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you for doing this and bringing this to our community. I know that I used it last year, and Trustee Hon used it.
I used it last year.
Trustee Rockford used it last year. Did you go out of the country?
No, my daughter didn't.
Okay.
Yep.
I know Trustee Hon and I didn't, so it was very helpful to actually have it right here.
I think Brett went to Riverton.
You had passports? Wow, that's gonna tough.
So, no, it's been, it was great, it was seamless. My wife used it. You know, I'm happy to see you bringing it back to Sherman and, you know, offering it up to all the other residents. We'll do everything that we can to raise the awareness with social media, our website, entry signs, and things along those lines. That being said, anybody any comments?
I said one is that, I don't know if they have room here or not, but one of the things that I didn't know, until my grandson had to get a passport and he was a baby, he had to have both parents there to do it.
Yes.
You can't, as one parent can't get a passport for a travel owner.
Correct, correct. Two points, Kevin, first of all, you're not holding out to be very proud of it? Well, I'm gonna take away, we'd have rooms if we took out my picture. We'll strongly consider that.
Isn't a child's passport, isn't a child's passport for less time also?
It is for less time and less money.
And what is the cost for passports now?
$110 to the United States Department of State for a new passport. And then a $35, thank you, sir. A $35 charge to the Circuit Clerk's office. And we also do pictures. We make it a one-stop-shop opportunity. We are charging $10 for the passport photo and that's about six bucks less than Walgreens or CVS or anything in the competition. And if that's, if you're doing a renewal, it's $110 to the United States Department of State and no charge to the Circuit Clerk's office.
All right, excellent. So, who would like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation that sits on the table to proclaim September as passport month in the Village of Sherman?
She's got the little flag here.
All right. Trustee Long, make some motions, I'd like, Trustee Rockford, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, proclamation will be adopted.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee of Department reports, I don't think there's anything to report. Anybody think of anything since we started the meeting? So let's move to Chief Banger, do you have anything else?
Just real quick, today's the first day of school. We did coordinate with Principal Edgerton over there about setting up a parking one side of the road in Old Sherman because that's been a problem years past. We've been so ill-visited, your teacher and I, and so that nature. So, we did set that up and our reports, things went very well. And we were up there first thing this morning for the first day of school and everybody getting pictures and all that. Yeah, it was a good day.
Very good. Sherman Emergency Management is off this evening. Public Works has been between the halls. So, brings us to new business, of which there is no new business, any old business, there's no old business of people in the board civic organizations. We did have Mr. Palazzolo listed, but we've already taken care of that. Would you like to say anything further?
Thank you, sir.
Brings us to the public comment period. We do have a few guests, they have signed up to say that they are seeking recognition. So, I would ask the first individual, the Honorable Judge Gershaw, to please come forward. I can't believe I'm setting a timer on you, but you have three minutes on your. So please comply.
I am Rayne Gershaw. I am going around to the municipalities and introducing myself. I'm one of the newer circuit judges. I was appointed in January of this year. Pete Kavanaugh was elected to the appellate court, so I was appointed to fill his vacancy. So I've been traveling to the municipalities to introduce myself and talk a little bit about the court, so I don't want my husband to time.
No, he will. You're okay.
Prior to becoming a judge, I was in private practice with Hinshaw and Culbertson. I did defense work, I did municipal work. The city of Auburn was one of my big municipalities. Sangamon County Sheriff's Office was my other big client. SMTV, the airport, different municipalities, so brings back memories sitting here and listening to all this stuff. And I practiced for 17 years prior to joining the bench and I stayed at Hinshaw that entire time and then I had the pleasure of coming on. I wanted to talk to you a little bit, everyone knows about the courts. I don't know if anyone's ever experienced the court, which is probably good. But a little bit of difference between the judges, we have circuit judges and we have associate judges. The circuit judges, which I am, were elected by the citizens to handle the more complex cases, the felony cases, the civil law cases seeking damages in excess of $50,000, tansery, and assigned cases of adoption, those are the best. The associate judges, we have eight of those in Sangamon County, and they are appointed by the circuit judges. We just appointed a new Windwayne Gabb, who's gonna be sworn in on August 30th and he will start after Labor Day. The associate judges, they handle misdemeanors, small claims, family law, orders of protection, the smaller cases, but we do, we do help one another and handle all types of cases. And then one aspect I'd like to talk about that many people don't know about are our specialty courts. So we have drug court, mental health court, and veterans' court. So we call it recovery court instead of mental health court. But many times there are offenders who may commit offenses because of some extraordinary circumstances. So incarceration may not be the appropriate punishment for them. So if they qualify, then you go to drug court, recovery court, or veterans' court, seek treatment. They still have a regimen that they have to follow, they have to check in with the courts. If they comply with everything, they ultimately graduate and then they don't have a felony on their record. However, if they do fail, then they are kicked out of the program and then they do fall back with the original statutory punishments that are imposed. But we've had a lot of success with this. We had a drug court graduation, I think it was Stevie Waring, our first veterans' court graduation, August 28th, I believe, is our first. We had a drug court graduation, I think it was steady where we were in our first veterans court graduation, August 28th, I believe is our first graduation for that. So we've had a lot of success with that. But that's just a quick overview. Hopefully I made it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. And if not, I thank you for allowing me to address you tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. You're welcome. Anytime, come back. Hopefully none of us see you in your. The next individual is another honorable person, my friend, Mr. Andy Goldman. Why don't you tell us, tell us about what you, why you're here and what you, what you do?
Hey, Mr. President, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity with you. I'm Andy Goldman, I'm the Sangamon County Auditor. A little bit of background, I grew up in a farm in Pawnee and I learned in the south of the county. For 20 and a half years I served in Sangamon County and for 13 of those years I served as chairman of the financial committee. Very much so was involved with the auditor's office at that time. 2015, I was appointed to this county auditor and 2016, I was elected as county auditor. Just finishing up my fourth year on the job. My job essentially is to monitor the financial operations, internal financial operations of the county. We are by statute the official accountant of the county also. I have a small office and two full time people and a part time person in my office. One of the biggest things we do is obviously when it comes time for requisitions and bills, make sure the proper payment is in order, documentation is in order. We have the board site committee of the county board, which also looks at those bills. Usually there's at least two sets of eyes that look at those bills at all times before we approve them and send them down to the treasurer's office for payment. And by the way, we pay our bills on time, we'll grab that too. Another thing we do is we're in charge of the fixed assets. We have about, about a hundred and one million dollars for fixed assets. And it's a $500 of the board and it's a fixed asset in our eyes. So we're, we keep an eye on that, 35 different departments from all the financials like that. I also, our office is very much involved with the county board office. The county board office just has a county administrator and administrative person. So we do a lot of financial work. I have someone in my office and also myself, the county administrator, we do the budgets. We've been doing the budgets for a number of years. The budget this year is about 110 million dollars. We have balanced budgets and we live with earnings. And I know that you have to do that here, you have to make tough decisions on budget items, but sometimes you have to say no, you can't do things. And that's what we've done. We're proud in fact that we do have balanced budgets because mom and dad's in Sangamon County, they have to balance their checkbooks too, and why shouldn't we? So that's our philosophy, we've had that. Just, I try to make business about every, every other year if I can, get on, visit the board, we just kind of give you a little update of what we're doing in our office. We do a lot of ways, but that's just kind of some highlights. Maybe a brochure, kind of tells you a little more of the depth of what we do. On the back, it says FY18 for finances and revenue we bring in. Obviously this is FY19, FY19 did not change much as far as percentages and I'm teaching the brand new, so. We gotta try and answer questions.
What were the three biggest problems you hadn't solved when you took over from your predecessor?
You know, in all honesty. You know, in all honesty, Paul and I have worked together very closely together, we was county auditor and I was just asking. You know, we didn't really have to change very many things at all. We were one big team in Sangamon County, we all worked together.
Good answer.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are always welcome back.
Don't live another day.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys coming out and actually keeping, keeping the contacts up. Cause we're all, we all need to.
And I would just say this too, even though I'm not on the county board, in my office, it's right across from county board chairman's office. We talk pretty frequently and if there's anything I can help you with, you can.
Absolutely, and vice versa, likewise, anything you guys ever need, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Your resources are helpful. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's see. Uh, we have two other individuals who have signed in to speak. Brad, can't read your last name.
DeLuca.
DeLuca, okay, Brad DeLuca. The four.
Little Quellary subdivision. And I wanted to put a portable storage unit in my backyard. And I need to know if I have to have a building permit for that. I talked to Mr. Stratton and his indication was that I did.
Yeah, you want to put, say that one more time.
A portable storage building, not on a permanent foundation.
But it's a structure, right? So, yeah.
It's an accessory structure.
Yeah, you'll have to, it will fall under an accessory structure. So you'd have to just get building permit. And what that building permit would also have to do is comply with the homeowners association covenants in that area. So you'll have to get with Mr. Carter, Joe Carter, to get, there's a, there's a place on the, the building permit where you would fill it all out and then you'll go to whoever's the head of the homeowners association or the developer in that area. Right now, Mr. Carter, Joe Carter still retains all the authority of that area. So he would have to sign off and say it's in compliance with the homeowners association, association covenants of which he, like I said, he's still in charge of that. When he signs off on that, then the village administration, we can issue you a building permit for that accessory structure.
So the reason I'm here is, has that, the building permit, has that changed in the last eight months?
Has the actual physical building permit itself?
Not as to having to pay a building permit fee to put a portable storage building in.
Oh, no, that's been there for a long time, very long time. Yeah, anybody that puts those up, unless they were breaking the rules and what, I mean, you always, that could happen. But if we fine them, then they will have to pay it and pay fines and things along those lines. But you're doing the right thing by coming in, you know, seeing what, what the process is. It's not.
The reason I wanted to hear from you is because different people in the subdivision have conflicting stories on it.
Yeah, no, it hasn't changed. What has changed, but this has been many years ago, we did change the fact that the building permit application did not have a place on it where the homeowners association or the developer would have to sign that. So the homeowners association covenants is a two party agreement between the person that chooses to live in that area and the developer of that area. So when you close on your house, that's a reconciliation of a document that you agree to live by. Now, the village does not enforce those two party agreements, the homeowners association covenants for that area. We do have a blanket system of ordinances that are much, much bigger in scope, I should say, the umbrella of it. So like steeplechase, if you were to put a pool in, you could only put an underground pool in and you can't have a fence. You have to have a fence and you can't have a fence that blocks the view of the pond, various different things along those lines. Whereas say in your area, you could put, you can put an above ground pool up. Now, those two covenances differ because they're the different areas. The village has no standing essentially, I mean, ultimately somewhat could, but I don't think that we would. But that's enforceable by the homeowners in those areas. Now, our blanket ordinances would say everybody has to have a fence around a pool. Not specific if it's rod iron or anything along those lines, whether it's above ground or underground. So that's, that's what I'm saying right there. In terms of the building permit process and going back to that, why we did that and implemented that many years ago is because we had a lot of different, it was kind of getting to be like the wild west in terms of various different things. And things were happening in some homeowners associations, their treasury isn't really established. They don't have enough in there, or they do, or they're not kind of enforcing it. Certain, you know, once it's done, then it's a lot of, you know, money and action and civil courts to actually enforce that. Sometimes it doesn't happen, so it brings the value of that area down. So now if we can stop it on the front end, right up in the get go. Without that signature, you can't do it. And that person that's the head of that homeowners association board is going to sign off on that. Where that developer that, you know, is taking the risk of keeping that area nice, you know, to try and continue to sell lots of that area. They sign off and they say it's in accordance with their, their covenants and you're perfectly fine with that as long as it meets the overall scope of the ordinances that we have in place. And so, yes, no, it isn't in the last eight months. It's years ago that that process took place, so.
So association rules, I thought Joe Carter, did he get that?
Uh, they're recorded at the county, actually.
Oh, they are?
And Ms. Rock, Ms. Rockford used to work in the recorder's office, so you can go to the recorder's office.
Do I have to go there, can I get them online?
Um, I think you can just call them and they could probably, I don't think.
We may have it on our website. We started, yeah, so that's.
Depends on what edition you're in, but I believe that we have all of the covenants online or available in our office.
Okay.
There's a lot of stuff on our website that people.
I'll kind of chat with you.
Yeah, if you have an email, I'd be happy to send all that information right to you.
Yeah, we started having those onto our website, you know, I don't know, a year or two years ago, as we expanded our website, so. Yeah, so we've, we've done some of the footwork. If you have any questions, you can always go down to the recorder's.
Yeah, give it forward.
And then accessory structures, what, 25, 50 bucks, something like that? 50 bucks, yeah. No, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming up. Uh, the last individual who signed in to speak is Mrs. Walden. So if you would like to come forward and address the board.
All I wanted to say is that the neighbor's backyard is getting a little cold and needs some grass again.
The next door neighbor? The next one you went?
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been mowed, I think. And unlike a lot of grass that's dying out because it was still deprived of water, that yard is doing rather well.
All right, we'll make contact and see what we can do to get that person to fix that. So that's the last individual who's signed in to speak. That concludes the, everything on the agenda. There is no executive session. Brings us to the adjournment resolution. Before we adjourn, I'd like to make an announcement on a couple of upcoming events. Saturday, August 24th, which is this Saturday at dusk, Green Family Stores are presenting the movie in the park, Dumbo. So a good family friendly movie in, in, at the park, at the amphitheater. That starts at around dusk. Popcorn, drinks, water, everything's provided, free of charge to anybody that comes. There's no, no, no deal. Sunday, August 25th at 5:00 PM, Sunday afternoon, the chorus is a, the chorus and ice cream social. It's the land of Lincoln chorus with sound cele, with sound celebration chorus. So if you ever want ice cream and the Lincoln Lane chorus, sounds of the Lincoln Lane chorus, you're welcome to the tent there, of which everything's free as well, right?
That's right.
Somebody pays for something, it always, but it's free if you go up there. Nothing's free. Okay, all right, I gotta go coach J. F. football, so let's have a motion to adjourn. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by trustee Tim. All in favor, signify by saying aye.